Six o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to? Jonathan, you lead us in a prayer.
Yeah. Father, we just come to you this evening thankful for your son for what he did for us on the cross. We just ask that now that everything we do and say brings honor and glory to you. In Jesus's name I pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Next item up, real call, I am present, Alder Woman Dent.
Present.
Alder McKenzie.
Present.
Alderman Whalen.
Present.
Alderman Letchworth.
Present.
City Administrator Burbidge. Assistant City Clerk Sir. City Attorney Weber. Public Works Director Payne. Chief of Police Chase. We have Melissa Boys from Park and Rock. And other city staff. Next item up is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Now we'll call for the vote. Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alder Woman Dent.
Yes.
And Alderman McKenzie.
Yes.
Next item up is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderman McKenzie.
Yes.
Alder Woman Dent.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
We have nobody for public comment tonight. Uh, next up is bids. We have the auditor bid.
Okay, so our contract with our current auditor is up, and so we submitted a request for proposals. Um, that was advertised April first, seeking qualified certified public accounting firms to perform our annual audits, beginning with fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, so that's the budget year that we're in now. Um, proposed contract term was for three years with the option for a three-year extension, subject to city's approval. Um, it was advertised in the Salem News, posted on our website, and it was sent directly to eight auditing firms. We got one bid back. Um, that's what we're hearing from other cities as well. They're struggling. Some cities don't have an auditor, so, um, so that one proposal was from Kristen DeLuca, who is, has been our auditor for the past several years. Um, you can see there are fiscal impacts, um, for this next year. Let's see, hold on just a second. So she's got next year, not the current year. So you'll see that the prices are graduated for the fiscal year twenty-six, which is the one we're preparing budget for now. Uh, it'll be fourteen thousand, then up to fourteen-five, and then fifteen thousand after three years. So let me look here, and you do have the packet in your, hold on. And you, and you'd have the proposal in your packet. Okay, there we go. So fourteen thousand for two years, fifteen for two years, uh, fourteen-five for two years, and fifteen for two years, um, is how it's broke out. So that being the only one we received, it did meet all of the requirements per our bid specs or our request for proposal specs, and so at this time, staff recommends approval, um, of these services. Let me back up here to the staff summary. I would stand for any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions?
I have none.
Okay.
All right. Well, it's time, do I have a motion except the auditor bid from Kristen DeLuca?
Move to accept the bid from Kristen DeLuca.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderman McKenzie.
Yes.
And Alder Woman Dent.
Yes.
Next up, we got the airport engineering consultant qualification bid.
Okay, so this one, the staff summary I passed out, apologies, it did not make it into the packet. Um, so this is another one that, um, our contract with our current airport engineer is up, and so we had needed to go out for requests for qualifications on this for a new airport engineering firm. Um, this one went out on April second, so the day after the auditing request, and of course was again posted to our website. It was also posted on MoDoc's website, and then it was sent to a list of airport engineering firms. Once again, this is the only one that we received back, um, request for qualifications. Um, we have been working with this firm for the past several years. Um, I know from my perspective, I'm happy with the work that they have done. They're very easy to work with. And so they have helped us prepare for the last several years, our ten-year plan for the airport, so that, that's out there. It's posted on our website. And once again, this firm does meet all of our qualifications that we had listed, and so at this time, staff's recommendation is to approve the bid or approve the request for qualifications from H W Lockner. And I'd stand for any questions.
No questions? This time, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve H W Lockner's, the city of Salem's airport engineer.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Now we'll call for the vote. Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alder McKenzie.
Yes.
Alder Woman Dent.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
All right, next up is the storm siren bids.
Okay. Okay, this one's a little bit different. Um, I know this is one chief has worked on quite a bit. If, do you want to speak on it, chief, or do you want me to address? Okay, do you want me to talk about it with the changes with the grant? Okay. So this is one, we had applied previously, we had done a pre-application to C E M A, the State Emergency Management Agency, for a grant, and then we had also applied for a C D B G grant, a Community Development Block grant, for storm sirens. Um, then with the storm season that we've had this spring and concerns, we talked with the mayor, and it was like, well, let's go ahead and get a request for bids out there. Um, let's get this moving. So we advertised the request for bids. This went out about the same time as the others, just shortly after April eighth. Same thing, published it in the Salem News, went to our city website, and then was sent, um, to multiple vendors. Um, on the day that we were to do, the bids were due, um, we got, we received, I think, three, four, my apologies. There we go. Yeah, looks like three, from three different companies, we received these bids. Um, the day before we did the bid opening, um, an email was resent, um, to myself and to chief. Missed it. We have had some email issues that hopefully are worked out at this point. Um, had missed the original email, but on April thirtieth, they resent it thankfully, letting us know that we had been invited to submit a full application for the C E M A, uh, Hazard Mitigation Grant, the one that was the pre-application previously. So at this time, and I did confirm this, um, we can go ahead and approve one of these bids, or if we would like to pursue the grant, then we need to deny all bids at this time, and then submit our grant application, which is due in September, and then we will have to rebid the project, assuming grant award.
Open it up to the board for discussion.
What's the status of the current system we have? Is it operable, inoperable, partially operable?
Yes.
Sometimes operable?
It's partially operable.
Partially, okay.
So, so one option, um, in conversations with chief and Jonathan on this in the police department, um, is that one of these vendors, we, we've struggled to get the vendor who in the past has worked on our system to get here, okay? Um, but one of these vendors could potentially come and do, you know, assess them and, and do some fixes on our current system. So that's one option. If you chose to reject all bids, then we could see about maybe having this individual come look at our current ones that aren't, that aren't performing.
So if any of them-
What would be the course of action if he came and said it wasn't fixable?
Then we proceed forward with-
The bids, rebidding?
We'd have to rebid it. Yeah, because if you reject them, and we have him come and look, and he say they're not fixable, we would move forward. I'm assuming maybe with the grant or, yeah.
Okay.
So, well, we've got the, the grant also hanging out there still, that we're waiting to see, so I think-
The C D B G. Right.
Right. See if somebody could go with grant.
Yeah. Yeah. The concern, my concern when I was talking with Administrator Burbidge was is that if the grant falls through, and we have to submit, resubmit these bids, that even we might be without, you know, a good siren system, and it's kind, it, it, it kind of worries me because, I mean, with the way that the storms have been lately, you know, I mean, there is a lot of concern there, so.
Yeah, so we're trying to balance a fiscal decision with public safety.
Yeah.
But we could also have a company come and look at the sirens to make sure that they're optimal until we either know if they're going for the bid, or if we either-
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was fearful, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Is there a way that they can backday? I know some grants will, if you've already purchased the equipment, they can-
This one won't.
They will not.
No. No, and that was what I confirmed with them, that no, at this point, we would need to reject all bids to move forward.
So could we ask that somebody come look at the system, and in the meantime, is they going to reject the bids to see what the deal is?
That'd be a make that caution.
To reject all bids?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pursue.
Right.
What kind of timeline are we talking about finding out this, if he can or can't fix it?
That I don't know. I'm sorry? Okay.
I knew I'd get you up here. I just don't want to reject these and then find out that it's a, that we're going to go through a storm season and, and not have a direction.
Right.
So on one of the bids that was submitted, the owner of the company came for the bid opening, and he did an assessment on our current system. Uh, what we typically do is we'll test the sirens once a month, weather allowing. If it's clear weather, we don't want to test them in, in the gray weather or storm. Uh, and so we've had two that were consistently inoperable. That would be the Tenth Street, uh, siren system, and then the one that's over at the corner of Franklin and, uh, by the We Can Too. Yeah. Learning Center. Yeah, uh, no, not Grand, uh, Franklin and-
Oh, Al Brown, out by Al Brown Field? What is that, Fields Avenue or something?
Fields, yep, there you go. And so those two were consistently inoperable, uh, and so the owner of one of the companies offered to take a look at it. I advised him against that, that if he wanted to submit a bid, that he was eligible to do that, and he asked if it would be okay if he could go and look at the one on Tenth Street to see if he would be able to repair it and prepare a bid in the event that we wanted it. Uh, he went to that siren and, uh, was able to repair it. No charge to the city, despite being told that we have to have a bid, uh, so he did that for the charge. He said he's not sure what the balance, the harmonic balance on the siren system is. He said, but he guarantees that on our next test, that it will make noise. And he did a survey of our entire system. He said that every siren that we have, he can either repair, or if they choose his company, the sirens he puts in will work in conjunction with our larger sirens, and that he will, uh, take down any remaining that are not, not needed. Use them for parts to rebuild anything else that we have remaining.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. He's up for a motion.
Uh, so I guess I'll make a motion to reject the bids for the storm sirens, and to pursue the grant to prepare the existing storm sirens.
I second the motion.
There's no further discussion. I'll call for the vote. Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alder Woman Dent.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
And Alderman McKenzie.
Yes.
Next up, we have board and committee appointments, uh, for planning and zoning. My, I have a recommendation to fill the spot of, uh, Liz Condray, uh, was wanting to resign. Uh, Kim Stillman was wanting to, will, is willing to serve in her place.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second the motion.
Now we'll call for the vote. Alderman McKenzie.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alder Woman Dent.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Yeah, miscellaneous business, resolution number seventeen dash twenty twenty-five.
By caption only?
Yes, please.
Resolution seventeen twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the city of Salem, Missouri, and the city area chamber of commerce for operation of the visitor's center.
Thank you.
Okay, so this agreement, so this is a, a bid in arrears. Um, this will be retrospective back to July one, and I've already got it on the calendar to get it renewed on time, moving forward. So this is an agreement we've had longstanding since prior to my time with the city, um, and it's for services that the chamber provides in operating the tourism and visitor's center. That's, that is a need, um, that since they've moved to their location, there where Scoops used to be in the, in the Crossroads Center. Um, I know when they first moved there, their visitation numbers increased by a hundred or better visitors a month, like each month for the first six months or better. So it's been really good for visibility for visitors coming through. So again, this is just a contract with them, for them providing those services for us. And I would stand for any questions.
All right.
You're good.
All right. All right, it's time, do I have a motion for resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty-five?
Make a motion to approve resolution number seventeen dash twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Now we'll call for the vote. Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alder McKenzie.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
And Alder Woman Dent.
Yes.
Next up, we got a conditional use permit or, or conditional use approval for a permit at three oh four East Center Street.
So I'll be filling in for Mr. Brown this evening. Oh, sorry, you need to read it.
I do not have it.
You don't have it?
I don't have anything, but-
Okay.
You should have a bill. I don't have any. Well, is it, um,
thirty-six fifty-nine?
I can read.
You want it by caption only? This being- Bill number thirty-six fifty-nine by caption only, sorry?
Thirty-six fifty-nine.
Yeah, thirty-six fifty-nine.
That's on the bills for-
That's right.
I don't have anything.
To rezone, okay. So we we have.
Nope, nope, she has it.
No.
Yep, but this is under, to be read under.
It's not, yeah. Okay, so this is, if you'll just read the title here.
Just-
Read it in.
Read it in the, the title, conditional use for approval of three oh four East Center Street.
Okay. Apologies for the confusion. This, this one is a little different. It's a conditional use application. Three oh four East Center is a vacation rental. And so per our codes, um, they're just, so long as they pass inspection, and this one did, Jared's inspected the, the building itself, um, they've, it's gone before the Board of Adjustments, and they have approved it, and so then the recommendation comes to you to approve this conditional use of three oh four East Center as a vacation rental. And so they heard, uh, sorry, Board of Adjustments heard this last Thursday evening.
Opening up for discussion.
Okay.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve, um, the conditional use of three oh four East Center as a vacation rental.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
This time, I'll call for the vote. Alder Woman Dent.
Yes.
Alder McKenzie.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
And Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
All right. Next up is the first readings of bills. We'll start with bill number thirty-six fifty-four.
Yes. Is this one? Uh, by, bill thirty-six fifty-four by caption only?
Yes, please.
An ordinance amending section seven hundred point one nine oh for water rates.
Okay, so this has been reviewed by the utility committee, and this is, uh, a recommendation by the utility committee, um, to change water rates. Um, you'll see it, apologies, I have the actual ordinance mocked up for all of you. Okay, to go from a six-dollar base rate for residential water, um, to eight dollars, and to increase the volume rate per thousand gallons from five dollars and thirty-nine cents to seven dollars and fifty cents. Um, for in-city commercial water, it'd go from twelve-dollar base rate to sixteen, and from six seventy-eight to nine forty-nine, and then you'll see the rates there for outside of city limits. Um, sixteen base rate, nine forty-nine volume rate for residential, and hold on, make sure I'm okay, I ta, I stand corrected. Eight-dollar base rate, that last statement, eight-dollar base rate and seven fifty, volume rate per thousand gallons for commercial outside. For apologies, guys, um. Let me make sure I get this straight here. Water rates. Monthly residential inside the city goes from six to eight base rate, from five thirty-nine to seven fifty volume rate. Monthly residential outside the city goes from twelve to sixteen base rate, from six seventy-eight to nine forty-nine volume rate. Commercial within the city goes from six to eight base rate, five thirty-nine to seven fifty volume rate, and commercial outside the city goes from twelve to sixteen base rate, and from six seventy-eight to nine forty-nine volume rate per thousand gallons. And, and like I said, that is a recommendation from the utility committee.
I have a question. Um, when you were deciding these rates, were you considering like prior year's reserves?
Yeah.
So that's included in this rate?
Yes.
So, the idea was, do we try to pull it all from prior year reserves to come up with the fund balances for the next, uh, few years in projects? Or do we try to subsidize it a little bit by doing partial funding to make that money go a little bit further and do a little bit of an increase, so it doesn't, it doesn't hurt us as much when it comes to the utility bills?
Okay, and my other question, I guess, goes to the city administrator that, is the city willing to make any concessions to help the residents of the city, um, with regard to this increase in rates? I mean, in some cases, it's going to be pretty steep for some people. Um, I'm, and this is throwing this out there, um, COLA merit increases? Um, some give and take on that, so that we can do some work on these rate increases?
So that's going to be at the pleasure of the board.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, at this time, I don't have anything that's been approved by this or any previous board about changes to that effect.
Okay.
So that, that would be at the pleasure of the board to, to propose or come up with something of that kind, so. Okay, and tonight is just a first read, so it's just an introduction, okay?
Can it all be summed up or finalized at the approval of the-
The next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Yes. Okay.
All right. Next reading is bill number thirty- Next reading is bill number thirty-six fifty-five.
By caption only?
Yes, please.
Bill thirty-six fifty-five, an ordinance amending section seven ten point zero one oh, monthly utility bills, disconnection and reconnection of services.
Okay, so, um, as you on the committee or on the board know, um, staff did some work, and then we also ran through the utility committee some updates to our utility policies. And so with that, the recommended changes that came from both staff and the utility committee, there were a few ordinance changes that needed to be made to fit the recommendations. So before you this evening, there are, um, I believe, three ordinances that came out of those discussions, and so these are the updates to that. Um, so this one this evening, let me come down to the actual ordinance, just one moment. So this is for disconnection and reconnection of services, um, and so it's cleaning up, uh, the language. So we no longer do disconnects and reconnects for, uh, during off hours. So we do those during working hours. And so this is removing language about doing them after hours unless, we do them in emergency situations, but not on a normal basis. Okay? So it's updating the code to reflect that. Any questions on that? Okay.
All right. Next up, bill number thirty-six fifty-six.
By caption only, thirty-six fifty-six?
Yes, please.
An ordinance amending section seven hundred point zero three zero of utility deposits.
Okay, so this is another one. Um, these deposits were previously approved by the board, um, but we found in our review some technical, um, jargon that we needed to update with it. And so again, this is kind of as a result of the policy review, making sure that all of our codes are up, up to date and, and clean. So, no, no changes. These are the deposits that we have, that have been approved previously, but again, eliminating some of the additional language. No questions?
Next up, bill number thirty-six fifty-seven.
Thirty-six fifty-seven by caption only?
Yes, please.
An ordinance amending section seven zero five point oh nine oh, after-hours callouts.
Okay, so this is the last of these for this meeting that were, like I said, a result of the policy review. Again, um, this section originally talked about after-hours disconnects and requiring businesses to have a deposit on file with the city clerk so that they wouldn't be charged for after-hours disconnects. And we have not done that, no one in the office knows when we've done that last. So again, cleaning up the code, um, amending the language to reflect what we actually do, so.
Any questions?
All right?
All right, moving right along. We got the first and second reading of the next few bills. Bill number thirty-six fifty-nine.
By caption only?
Yes, please.
An ordinance to rezone property located at five oh one South Grand Street from residential to commercial. Permission for the second reading?
Yes, please.
By caption?
Yes.
An ordinance to rezone property located at five oh one South Grand Street from residential to commercial.
Thank you.
Okay, so this one went before the planning and zoning commission on May sixth, as you can see, and this is a rezone of the property. And it is the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission to rezone five oh one South Grand from residential to commercial. This is the SBU building. Um, without rezoning it, um, the, the actual use that would be allowed per our zone, if, if, if the current usage were to stop and it be vacant, the only use that would be allowed would be a single-family home. Okay, so, so rezoning makes sense in this instance. Um, so again, it is a rezone of the five oh one South Grand from residential to commercial.
All right, it's time I open it up for discussion.
I agree it needs to be rezoned, uh, and like a lot of people in the community, I, I'm concerned about the actions and what that could mean after we rezone it and the transaction itself. But those concerns will not cause me to vote against the rezoning. So, but, that's the only thing I've got to think about. Looked at it and researched it, and we've discussed it, and, and that seems to be the right trend, the natural trend of that area, it's commercial with the treatment clinic and there, and then I don't know what the plans of the old shelter workshop is, but right behind it is Four Rivers.
Right.
So, that seems to be like a spot commercial to it.
Right. N- yeah, not necessarily a spot zone, but a commercial area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to know more about Compass. I'd like to know, you know, are they, are they federally funded? Are they state-funded? You know, is that pretty secure or?
Gotcha. Well, I know there are folks in the audience tonight who might be able to answer that question, but that's.
I'll, I'm just not gonna affect the zoning, but that's for few, down the road.
Right, right, right. Yep.
Yeah.
All right, it's time to have a motion for bill number thirty-six fifty-nine.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, bill three six five nine, rezoning of five oh one South Grand from residential to commercial.
I'll second that motion.
Now I'll call for the vote. Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Dent?
Yes.
Alderman Weyland?
Yes.
And Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
Next up is bill number thirty-six sixty.
Bill thirty-six sixty by caption only?
Yes, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Salem, Missouri to execute change order number one with B and H well drilling and pump services incorporated for the water system improvement contract, C, Pitless Well. Permission for a second reading?
Yes, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Salem, Missouri to execute change order one, number one, with B and H well drilling and pump services incorporated for the water system improvement contract, C, Pitless Well.
Thank you.
Okay, so I believe in your packet. Um, I know Steve and I could stand up here and, and attempt to answer your questions, but I would like to refer, we have the dollar amounts here, um, the total amount is four thousand, uh, forty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents, which would be coming from the gr- the ARPA grant that we have for this project, with the city match of four hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. Um, Archer Elgin did write up a memo and include it in here that explains the details behind this. So there's, there's a, a memorandum both for this change order number one and for number two. Um, this one basically deals with additional casing in the well that was necessary due to the substructure. Um, I'm not gonna be able to explain it as well as what they do in their memorandum, so I would, like I said, refer you to that. If there's any s- questions that we can answer that Steve and I can't answer for you, we'd be happy to attempt it. Um, yeah. Well, driller noted encountering soft broken zone at a depth of three hundred and thirty to three hundred and thirty-five feet. Um, so like I said, they, uh.
Looks like they encountered sandstone and mud.
Yeah. And so needed to install additional casing. They did that while they were in the hole, so this has already been, been installed because they were there, um, so.
They just, they filled the void.
I'm sorry?
They just filled the void.
Right.
This can, you don't know until you do it how big it is.
Right.
I don't have any more questions.
All right, do I have a motion for bill number thirty-six sixty?
Make a motion to approve bill number thirty-six thirty, sixty, thirty-six sixty.
I second that motion.
Right.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Alderman Weyland?
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
Alderman Dent?
Yes.
And Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Next up, bill number thirty-six sixty-one, both first and second reading by caption only, please.
Bill thirty-six sixty-one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Salem, Missouri to execute change order number two with B and H well drilling and pump services incorporated for the water system improvement contract, C, Pitless Well.
Thank you, go ahead.
Second reading by caption only?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Salem, Missouri to execute change order number two with B and H well drilling and pump services incorporated for the water system improvement contract, C, Pitless Well.
Thank you.
So this is on the same well, this is to do an additional drawdown test. Um, they'll have to come back on site and, and do this test at a lower gallon per minute pumping from the aquifer, um, to see how the well recovers, so. Just of note, after change order number one, there's still a hundred and twenty thousand and change on the grant remaining as contingency funding, so, uh, that, those funds are there, so again, just three hundred and eighty-five thousand for city match for this. And they have a, a memo in the packet also for this item from Archer Elgin.
I have a question, um. What if this next test doesn't go well, what's, where do you go from there?
So, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman. Um, so basically, they, they ran the first test and they ran into high turbidity. Uh, the second drawdown test, they will, instead of trying to pull four hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty gallons per minute, they'll use a smaller pump. They'll drop down it at a little bit of a lower level. Hopefully, the sediment has settled enough, which in the samples, we've seen it settled pretty quick. And they'll try to pull, they'll start slow at a two hundred, two hundred and fifty gallon per minute rate, increasing to three hundred, and three hundred and three fifty is a sweet spot. It's not the four fifty we were hoping for, but hopefully the well recovers and the flow is good, and will, uh, the second test would yield. They, they, it's twenty-four hour test, so that's what the second test is about.
So it's basically hope for the best?
Yes, yes. And it, you know, all the engineering specs and all the DNR contact and, and every, every bit of information they had said this was a prime spot. Um, was there, is there a clay vein there close? We're not sure. They're, they could do a camera test. That's eighteen thousand dollars, so uh, our engineering firm, Archer Elgin, said this was the route to go and, and see how this pans out, so. We were, uh, we were flowing really good when they were doing the original well, and, uh, things were looking great, and it just took a, it took a turn, six hours into the well test, uh, the four hundred and fifty gallons a minute, it, it really pumped some, some clay unfortunately, so.
So one note, um, on this one, DNR is still reviewing this, so the recommendation is to approve it contingent on DNR's approval. Okay? But that way we don't hold up the process and moving forward with the well.
Yeah. And this, and then, yeah, coming out of ARPA funds and costing the city three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, it's unfortunate, but.
Yeah. Did he say if it does hold, will they like increase it later on, or just leave it at, just leaving it at three fifty?
My understanding was three fifty was a, a nice round number, uh, not the four fifty we were hoping for, but, um, functional and.
I'm just taking, trying to take stress off of well number four, so.
Gotcha. Any, any other questions for me?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, it's time to have a motion for bill number thirty-six sixty-one.
I make a motion to approve bill number three six six one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
And I'll call for the vote. Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
He needs to put that in the motion.
Point of order.
Yeah, point of order.
Point of order.
You need to put in your motion that it's contingent upon DNR.
Yeah, please.
All right. Remake, just redo your motion.
All right, I make a motion to approve bill number three six six one with the DNR approval.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Now I'll call for the vote. Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
Alderman Dent?
Yes.
And Alderman Weyland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Boards of city officials, boards and committees. Ms. Burbridge, your first, ma'am.
So, uh, just one item to report on this evening, um, well, I'll take that back, maybe more than one. Um, previously, we had applied for, it was an EE CDBG grant, so this was for streetlight replacement to upgrade our existing, um, streetlights to all be LEDs. I did receive word earlier this week that we have been denied on that. Um, they did say that, um, if some of the projects that they awarded grant funding for don't make or aren't ready, that then they would consider, they would move down the list, so.
Did they say how far down the list?
They did not. They did not.
We're not next in line?
They didn't say, so, but at least there's word on that one. Um, a heads up, um, next agenda in a couple of weeks looks to be a pretty heavy agenda. You're welcome, Alderman Rick, Alderman Letchworth. Um, so just, just know that's coming. That's gonna be a pretty lengthy agenda in and of itself. And at some point, I don't know if we're quite there yet, I'm gonna have to bring the water tower colors before you all. I didn't know if you'd had any thoughts on those, or if there was anything else we wanted to discuss or look at beforehand.
I do. No mustard yellow.
I agree. I agree with that.
I know that we wanna welcome visitors, but not, you know, like in a French式way.
See, I call it yellow. Other staff, correct me, and they say it's gold, so.
I thought it made the Salem logo stand out more than any other color.
I think, I think it would, but.
Huh?
I think it would, but.
Did I not? Yeah.
Anyway.
Just a thought.
So anyway, I don't know if that'll be this next meeting, but it'll be coming fairly soon, so. That's all that I have this evening. Hmm?
Nothing.
Okay.
All right, the only thing that I have on my report is, uh, we're finally coming to almost an end to our citywide spring cleanup. We've got three more days left, so, uh, all that unwanted stuff, I'd please get it out. And if not, we'll, uh, pick up the stragglers later on because I'll be off the following week and my help can take care of that. Other than that, my report's over with. Mr. Steve Payne, come on up.
Okay, so I'm gonna start off with wastewater treatment plant. Um, the, uh, staff and, and I sat down with FEMA representative personnel, uh, with mitigation office as well as the office of, uh, not investigations, but folks that come out and take a look at damage and, and do assessments. Uh, did a walk, walk down of the damaged areas out at the, the plant and, uh, make sure that everything was documented appropriately, and, uh, answered any questions they had. It was a very, a very useful conversation because the mitigation staff, um, were really leaning forward on us getting on some projects. Uh, for instance, uh, some of our electrical buckets and electrical cabinets that, um, were, were hit by four feet of water. Basically, uh, extending that and dragging new cable to ri- raise those up would be hundreds of thousands of dollars, but they felt that if we built in-house, if we had our construction crew build concrete encasements around them and put, uh, sump pumps in them, you know, stairs up and over to a level of five feet, that that was a mitigation that FEMA would reimburse us for most likely, so that in the future, if they have a, a flood like we had, that we wouldn't have those issues again, so. Uh, we've.
What do water crest at, Steve?
I wanna say it was four feet.
Four feet?
Out there at the, at the sewer plant, so that's what they documented.
They recommend building one five foot tall?
Yes. So, um, go ahead, ma'am.
Sorry, if I can add real quick on the FEMA stuff, so, um, Friday of last week was our last day to have identified all damage done. So, so that is in, and, and we, we won't be able to add any new projects at this point, so.
Was that, do we have some equipment at the, uh, treatment plant that we, is seasonal, that we haven't used or haven't tested electrical-wise?
Yes, seasonal equipment.
Did we turn it in as a loss? If this was the last day?
As it was tested.
I'd have put the plan in as a complete loss.
We did, we, we did fire up equipment and, uh, check it out and stuff, and, and this walk down, uh, the, uh, lead man, Josh Hunt, was very clear with them, and, and the, the actual FEMA inspector was a lineman with a lot of electrical experience.
Okay.
So opening up all those cabinets and showing him the sediment inside those. So, opening up all those cabinets and showing him the sediment inside those, that we're gonna have problems probably for years to come with some of those, so.
Good job.
Did what we could, thank you. Um, uh, they're continuing to prepare for the upcoming construction phase for, um, our, um, upgrades out of the sewer plant. Uh, daily testing's continuing, the plant is healthy, things are up and running. Um, we're, uh, getting into the season where you have to have more aeration and oxidation ditch, so there were, there's a one piece of equipment down, but we're working diligently to get it back online. Um, the water department worked fix a few water breaks around town and assisted the wastewater treatment plant with sewer main and sewer line blockages as needed. Um, the electric department, line trimming crew continues to make gains on work orders across Salem. I think they're rounding out, closing out everything, I've got them, uh, weeding through a list that was two, almost three years old and, uh, they've got it knocked out, so if anyone in the public has, um, their personal power line or power lines that they see that are in trees, uh, trees growing up around them, uh, call up to the main office and we'll put a work order and get those, uh, looked at and, and taken care of. Um, continued streetlight repairs across town, we are down to, I think he said, five LED street lamps. So, we, until the budget renews, at this point, we would not be doing any streetlight replacements. And we also have worked on a, uh, draft ordinance to talk about the old street lamps. It, there, there's, there's, uh, the old street lamps that folks paid for back in the day or that they were given and s- they had to hook up and someone put a street lamp in their yard. We have a lot of folks that contact us and say, hey, I, you need to fix this, well, there's no, there's been no structure for how that gets paid for, they're like, you just need to come and fix it, so. We go out and, uh, there's parts that aren't, you know, really readily available for these old lamps. You know, everything's moved to the LED stuff, you know, I'm talk, you know, I'm saying, so. Um, we just, we were looking at, uh, approaching you all with that and, and seeing if we could get a clear-cut policy on it moving forward to make sure that they get the help they need and that we also, um, you know, help the city, so.
Was it, is it for private use strictly?
Yes.
Of no benefit to the public?
Uh, so, pri- private use, so you-
Just residence?
Yes, your property, you want a dusk till dawn lamp on a pole that's in your yard, a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and we, you know.
I got you, I'm with you.
So, uh, planned power outages will still be conducted in June by show-me pole replacement and they're supposed to notify us so we can notify the community. Those should be short-term, uh, from my understanding, no more than forty-eight hour outages while they work on, uh, major lines, so. Uh, let's see, the crew set two service poles for new services, assisted the wastewater treatment plant, set a large, uh, oxidation ditch gearbox for one of our rotors to get the oxidation ditch up and running again. That was a casualty, the gearbox was a casualty of the, uh, flood that will go onto the FEMA reimbursement process. Um, and we had Dan Stokes come down from MPUA, um, we have a, uh, we've been approached and asked about what our power capacity is over in the, the neighborhood feeder line that runs over to Walmart. Basically, if I wanted to build a few houses over there, you know, could you support it? And so, um, I am not an electrical engineer, so Dan was kind enough to come down from Columbia and walk that through with our crews and did a bunch of testing and stuff, so he'll calculate that up and let us know where we're at on that feeder line, so. Uh, install four service upgrades from one hundred to two hundred amp, and, uh, I'd like to say thanks to, uh, our electric superintendent, uh, Josh Kochidoff, who has put in his no- two-week notice. Uh, Friday will be his last day and, um, we will be putting that out, hopefully posting that out tomorrow if all goes well and we'll, um, see if we can find us a new electric superintendent, high-speed, low-drag, uh, move the city in the right direction, so. Uh, construction crew prep four and pour curb and driveway over on Kaufman Street amongst other approaches, demolished the back shed off of their shop and built an improved carport to house equipment under it and out of the weather. They had that in their budget for this year, so they, I've, they've had to get over there and get some of that knocked out and, uh, what they're doing is an attempt to protect the equipment that we provided for them, which I, I really appreciate. Uh, they began various concrete projects for the summer, uh, keeping them busy. Surveyed and planned the large FEMA mitigation project I was talking about, the wastewater treatment plant. Street department picked up another load of cold patch and have been doing patches, the water cutout repairs across town, so. Um, I'm still hopeful that they'll get all of those knocked out. Um, I'll have folks approach me and ask like, the dig out on Kaufman Street, why is that, uh, why is that dug out? Why can't you patch it immediately? They really like to give it a couple of months to compact. Uh, unfortunately, it takes the traffic driving over to, to get the compaction that you need and want so you don't just fill it in with cold patch and then it sinks and then you have another bump to deal with, so. Um, if any of our population has a, a patch area that hasn't been done and it's been six, eight months worse, please let me know. I drive the streets, I try to find anything like that and report it to our street crew, but, uh, always take it from the public. If you've got something like that, let me know, and that's via seven two nine four eight one one, so. Um, they began mowing a lot across town, uh, I'd like to explain real quick the, the mowing process 'cause I'll have people call and say, ah, this is, this is growing up over here off of Iron Mountain Road, okay. They're getting to it, they, it's like snow removal, they, they have a process where they move around town with the, uh, sidearm boom and the mowing and stuff, so. If, if they haven't got to something, i- it's usually in the rotation. Still want people to call in, let us know, but I just want everyone to know that it's, it's in the loop, so. Street painting projects are in the works, that'll be coming up. Uh, the mechanic repaired and maintained multiple pieces of equipment citywide, currently is troubleshooting the street sweeper. It's down, uh, it's been a little tricky and now we've got a vendor that's helping us with it, so hopefully we'll have it back online and sweeping streets again. I'd like to give kudos to John, our mechanic, John Roos, for jumping on task as equipment repairs, uh, have, needs have ramped up. It just seems like here this spring, there's been a, a litany of, there's been plenty, plenty for him to do and he jumps right on it, so. Cemetery crew, I'd like to give them kudos, I think the cemetery is looking way better this year, they're, they're really getting after it, um, and making sure, getting the mowing done. Uh, cemetery cleanup day will be Wednesday, the twenty-first, and that's when the whole staff comes together and, uh, before Memorial Day and we break out, and some folks even bring their own weed eaters, you know, you hate to do that, but I can't even really rent them enough to fill hands and everybody pitches in, it's a, it's a great event if you like weed eating all day, so. Uh, let's see, just a quick reminder to citizens this week for the citywide cleanup. Four foot, nothing longer than four foot brushwise on, or tree limbs, uh, nothing bigger than four inch diameter. And if at all possible, set it at the edge of your yard versus in the curb and gutter because with the rainstorms we're having, then we have to find your brush down the street, so. Um, that's about what I've got, once again, any problems with, uh, utilities, call, call the main office, put a work order in and we'll get after it.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was long-winded, any questions?
Steve, did you wanna mention about Forester Works starting back up next week?
Yes, apologies, uh, Levi Forester with Forester, um, tree trimming and removal will be starting back up on our feeder line number one on the remaining portion of that. So, we will be putting out a map so that folks can see where they're gonna be, they should be making contact if they're gonna be in someone's yard. Um, that job will fluctuate with weather and, uh, terrain conditions as far as if their yards are soft. He does have a remote control saw arm piece of equipment that he utilizes. Um, sometimes we've had some folks upset with the first round because they see the brush got cut and the brush got piled and, and then everybody left for the day. They try to do cut, cut, cut for a couple, two, three days and then come through and, and, and collect all of that, so. Um, but don't hesitate to call, I'll answer the questions, Levi, uh, and his crews are pretty, pretty good, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, Melissa, it's your turn to shine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Soccer is over, we had two rainout dates that had to be made up, which was a little bit of a conflict 'cause we had softball and baseball starting, which was kind of in the way, but we got it all worked out and it's over. Summer ball has started, so practices have started, so if people have signed up but have not been contacted by a coach, they need to let me know immediately so that I can look them up and figure out what the issue is. Um, playground tiles, I have gotten word that a portion of the playground should be repaired May thirty-first through June the thirteenth. That's for the tile portion, we're still waiting to hear what the solid surface is going to be, they have not given a date yet. Um, uh, I did a walkthrough with FEMA on Friday, we went to the park and to Al Brown. Um, they had originally told us to put them into different categories instead of just putting them into two different locations, so the group that met with us on Friday recommended that we just do the two locations 'cause it helps with the funding process of the mitigation portion, so I thought that was a great recommendation to kinda he- help us out. Um, I am in the process of finalizing seasonal staff, I actually just hired someone sitting in this meeting, so work in progress. But, um, adding them all, we use a program called, um, Square Up. It's how we do all of our clocking in, clocking out and all of our scheduling, so I have to add everybody in, everybody has to add the app and it's, it's a big, long, fun process, but we're getting it done. Um, opening day of the pool is May twenty-fourth, so I think it's eleven days, so I'm also not only hiring and all that, but I'm planning all of the concessions and trying to get all the product ready and everything stocked and ready to go. Um, our cleaning day will be the twenty-second, so the day they get out of school, we'll be cleaning the pool, cleaning the concession and getting ready to go. Um, let's see, we have started planning also for the, uh, next Hot Air Balloon Festival. It is scheduled for October twenty-fifth, um, so that's still in the planning process, but is going to be moving forward. Um, and then I've also started working with another community member that's wanting to put on a really large event at, um, the Al Brown complex. Um, there might be some things that we need to do, like bringing electric down, but, um, it's probably gonna be a lot bigger than the Hot Air Balloon Festival from what I'm understanding. And, uh, I'm not gonna spoil it, I'll let them announce whatever they're doing, but, um, in the September timeframe is when it will be happening, but it could be good for the community, bringing in people and-
We need it.
It'll be good, it'll be good for us, but, um, that's all I have. You guys have any questions for me?
Keep up the awesome work.
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, we're good. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Next up, board reports, Alderman Letchworth.
I have nothing to report.
All right, Alderman Kinsey.
I have nothing to report.
No report.
Alderman Weyler.
No report.
All right, that's the night, please. Need a motion to go into, for closed session for attorney client privileges and personnel?
Make a motion, we go into closed session.
I second that motion.
I'll call for the vote, Alderman Weyler.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
And Alderman Dunn.
Yes.